Committee meeting of April 25th. If you would, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got a packed house tonight. Trying to get through everything.
How many tickets, I hope?
With as little as possible. All right, we'll start with the approval of items by consensus, starting with the approval of minutes for the April 11th, 2018 regular session. Motion by Tom, do I have a second? Peggy, all those in favor? That is unanimous. All members present with the exception of Manny, by the way. And seeking approval of warrants G. 424, R. 231, L. 51, FS. 40 and FS. 41. Do I have a motion? MJ, do I have a second, Tom? All those in favor? That likewise is unanimous. Seeking approval of warrants payroll 411, 2018 and 425, 2018. Do I have a motion? Jen, second. By Tom, all those in favor? That's unanimous with one abstention being Peggy. All right, warrant CB. 15. Do I have a motion? Tom, and the second, Julie. All those in favor? That is four in favor with two abstentions. And warrant sped 30, sped 31. Do I have a motion? Julie, second by Jen. All those in favor? And also four with two extensions. All right, and we will move on to our superintendent report.
Thank you, we just have a couple of actual dates going on. On May 1st with the strings concert at seven o'clock at the high school. May 2nd, Special Olympics, the high school starting will be nine o'clock. On May 3rd, there was a band concert at the high school at seven PM. May 4th and 5th is an art show at the middle school. May 4th starts at six PM. And 11 o'clock on May 5th, then those are the middle school. And town meeting is on Saturday, May 5th, starting at 10:30.
Thank you, Paul. All right, our next item of business, new business is the summer early, summer early fall 2018 DPW in public buildings projects. Paul, you want to fill us in on this, which there's some good stuff going on.
Sure, I had reached out to Mr. George Hooper, who's a president of public buildings. And Mr. Welch was DPW department. We just asked for some projects that they were doing over the, this summer. At the Shoshine Elementary School, we're going to put a new energy efficient LED lighting in and addressing some worn parts and panels and fencing at the skateboard park. Wilmington Elementary, they'll also be doing some efficient LED lighting fixtures. If anyone's been to the north, you can see what we're talking about. It's beautiful with the lighting that they put in last summer.
Yeah, absolutely.
So they're doing those projects, those two schools. At the north, they'll be rehabbing infield and paving and resupplying the rear and side pocket. Last summer they did the front. This summer they're going to do the side. We'll have a program that puts KES on the program, which is right on the north. Middle school will be upgrading the energy management system. This is for public buildings and provides inciting the heating system. HVAC controls have the middle school that we want to, obviously by the public buildings department. And some miscellaneous projects, they'll be cleaning and preparing the school for the new school season, new school year. Resurfacing gym floors, inspecting and testing fire extinguishers and alarms, inspecting and servicing all boiler heating systems at the schools and town buildings, changing filters and that sort of stuff. They'll help us, the school department, moving school equipment and teaching supplies for the summer special education programs. So they'll, you know, on the 21st, they'll move stuff from, with current locations to the schools that have the, some program. And then at the end of the program, they'll move the stuff back to where they belong. And the DPW continue to determine that program with all the fields and so forth.
Really is a striking difference what those LED lights, the difference that the LED lights made at the north, so I'm looking forward to that. And I'm sure all the car riding parents are looking forward to that paving at the north. Cut, yes, MJ.
Just, just a clarification. Now, have all the panels at the north been replaced? I know there were some panels that were discolored and breaking apart. And I knew that that was going to be an undertaking in previous years, but I didn't know if it was, if all the panels were.
I believe it's all set.
Okay, thank you.
I can verify, but I'm pretty sure it's all set.
Great, thank you.
Anything else? Paul? All right, and Paul, would you give us your recommendation for our last day of school?
So it's been a little bit of trying year with the, the snow, rainy windstorm we've had. We've had seven inclement days, if you will. The first one actually was October 30th. And then we had three in January and three in March. So we had seven. So that brings our last day of school to Thursday, June 21st. It'll be an early dismissal day, so I'd like to have that approved as the last day of school.
All right, do I have, yes, Julie.
I'll offer that motion. The 21st to be the last day of school.
All right, do I have a second? MJ? Are those in favor? That is unanimous.
If I could mention one thing, I think that it shows the benefit of starting before Labor Day. Because the summer's short, but as you know, many districts ran into issues where they had to either add time to a day Saturday, lose a day during April vacation, a whole bunch of other things. And a lot of them are still into the last weekend, June. Even with seven snow days, we're in pretty good shape.
Absolutely. All right, and excellent business. Wilmington Middle School Program of Studies.
Thank you, Mr. Welch is here to pull the program studies.
Welcome, Kevin.
Evening. So I'll be doing a quick overview of our program of studies. Hopefully.
Michelle, no, just fine, before this is.
Yeah, I know.
Kevin, maybe I'll try and plug in the PowerPoint.
It seems like.
Yeah, and then plug it back in. And then I escape out of, maybe escape out of your PowerPoint. So you go back to the desktop. There you go.
You know all the tricks.
Well, I'm used to my PowerPoint's not working.
Experience.
That would be me, you might, or is it wrong?
Apparently it just doesn't leave that one. My PowerPoint. Oh, there you go.
All right.
All right. So this is just a overview. We'll just briefly talk about the, the different subjects we offer at the middle school and go from there. So at the middle school, our program studies is all based on the, the state frameworks. Everything's aligned with the frameworks. So in English Language Arts, across the three grades, it's a lot of, a lot of focus is on writing and reading. Sixth grade, I know last year we've had a presentation about students with some argumentative writing. In, in the seventh, moving on to the seventh grade, they move on to different reading, whether it's different texts or short stories, historical pieces. Dickens is one of the, the, the stories that's, that's read in seventh grade. In eighth grade, it's really, the focus is pushed to, really pushes the students to get ready for the high, the high school level. And, you know, they do, again, more argumentative, they explore some narrative and they just continue their writing. Students in eighth grade keep portfolios, writing portfolios as well. Mathematics. Each, each of the three, three years in mathematics, they focus on four, four different areas. Each year they, they have a different focus and usually it's a, it's a focus on, on four different areas in math. One of the, one of the keys to look at when we think about mathematics program, it builds to the students having the option in the eighth grade, if they qualify, to take part in an algebra class. So each year, moving through, through the three grades at the middle school, it is, it is trying to get the students to the point where they are going to be able to compete, complete that algebra class if they meet the criteria. So again, every, every year, there are different aspects and it just keeps building towards the, towards their eighth grade year where it is prepping up for the high school level. In science, in the sixth grade level, what they start to focus on, on earth and, earth and science is curriculum, the physical sciences as well. When they get into the seventh grade, the focus is on systems. It's more concrete, concrete concepts in, in the seventh grade, getting them ready for the abstract. In the, in the eighth grade, as they continue on through, through the eighth grade curriculum, it, it moves more onto the design and how you utilize that data, that abstract data to, to solve the problems that you, you, that you are faced in the, in the scientific world. Again, every year, the, the curriculum builds following the state, the state frameworks. In our social studies, finishing up the four core classes that we have at the middle school in social studies. Currently, we, the sixth graders focus on world geography. In the seventh grade, it moves on to ancient civilizations up until the fall of Rome. And then in eighth grade, civilizations from the fall of Rome to the age of Enlightenment. Excuse me, social studies, just so you're all aware, the frameworks are being updated. So we can expect next year, there will be some changes here because there will be some shifting of standards about what year students will be taking what grade. And that, that information should be available to us come, come June. The middle school offers a reading program. All of our sixth graders take that reading program. And then that, that sixth grade data will then determine if a student needs to continue taking reading in seventh and eighth grade, where they will, where they will continue to build the skills they need to build to improve their reading skills. The students that don't necessarily qualify for the reading program will then move on to our world languages program. The world languages program starts with an exploratory program in the sixth grade. In the seventh and eighth grade, the students will then have the choice of taking Spanish, French, or Italian. We offer a number of specialist programs. We call them the Unified Arts at, at the, at the middle school, ranging from physical education, every student takes physical education for approximately ninety, ninety school days during the, during the year. We have health education, computer literacy, visual arts. That is, that's when we think of what, what a typical arts class is. That's, that's the visual arts program. Technology education, which could actually have been put into the, the science slide because technology education classes align with the science frameworks. They prepare the students for the eighth grade MCAS test in science where there's usually about twenty to twenty-five percent of the questions are technology educate related questions. We have, we have media class and we have, offer general music as, as our specialists. In addition to our specialists, we have, we have three performing arts. And we're, we're all going to be, they'll be on display this coming week with all of our, with all of our concerts coming up. But at the middle school, the students are, have the option of joining the band, performing in our core arts program and also joining the strings attached or the orchestra program as well. So that is, that is a very brief general overview of, of our different programs at, at the middle school, what we offer. The school is broken up into, as we know, three houses with three grades. Seven periods during the day. The students are on core classes, four, four of those, and they're on their team. That's where they'll have their, excuse me, that's where they'll take the math, the ELA, the science and the social studies. And then the three other periods of the day, they are, say, off team where they'll have their two specialists and either they're reading foreign language classes as well.
Thank you, questions, Kevin? Yes, Julie.
I know that with, with the math program, students need to meet certain criteria to be selected for the Algebra I in eighth grade. And also with the reading, again, there's a selection process for recommendation into a foreign language. Are we still supporting or allowing for parent overrides? I know in the past, we, if, if a parent disagreed with the recommendation that was made, are we allowing for that?
With one of, with what we've, with what we did last year with the algebra program, we actually provided some supplemental programs during the summer that they, that they could take to help, help with that appeal process.
Okay, okay. And is there, for lack of a better word, a consequence for a student whose parents is, is pushing for them to go into algebra or a foreign language and then they're not doing so well, once that decision is made?
Any, any student that would be put into a program that it turned out that they wouldn't,
Not a good fit.
Wouldn't be a good fit, we would make the appropriate adjustments to, for that student, not to, not to struggle and see, and see the success they, they need to see.
Yeah, sure. But is there a difference though with a, a parent overriding, so the parent's saying?
No.
No.
No, we, no, we have to look at the, the student and what's best for them at that time.
Yeah, okay. Sorry, I had another question. Just the packet that we received, this is what is officially available to students and families?
Yes.
Okay, just one clarification, you're talking about world languages?
Yeah.
And at, at the top, it says grade seven and eight word language is a, is a two-year program covering the first year of the high school, level one A or level one B. I think just for, just to make sure everything's aligned to what the high school program of studies is, my understanding is there's no longer a B level. It's either AP honors or college prep. Just want to make sure that it's, it's all consistent.
We can, we can adjust that.
Yeah, not a big deal, but it should be consistent.
MJ.
Just a quick question and Sean, you may chime in. I was just curious about the curriculum around the sciences. How is that, how was that curriculum developed, being created? Are we looking at outside curriculum programs to strengthen the curriculum we're currently doing with the sciences? Because I know the sciences and creating when the Common Core came in, there was a lot of readjustment and that was.
There, there had, there was a significant readjustment at the middle school when, when we aligned to the Common Core standards. But we actually did that at the same time as piloting the Pearson Science, Science Program. And this is our first, this was our first full year utilizing the Pearson program for science. So that we.
Because I knew we took on the math.
Yeah, we, we took on.
We brought in that math curriculum.
Right, with, the math was a year before the science and last, this past year was our first full year of science.
Okay.
So had very, very positive feedback so far.
And, and, you know, one of the benefits for the online program is ties into the next generation science standards. So as the standards get modified, like next year or the year after, the Pearson online program adapts to that. So it's Common Core, math frameworks, and next generation.
Right, and it also works very, very well with our one-to-one rollout so far because the, the students being able to access the tech, technology of, that Pearson offers in the classes is very, very useful and helpful for the students.
Would you mind answering a, just a curiosity question? Has no bearing.
Yeah.
What, were there other products looked at, looked at for the science curriculum? Or was Pearson the only one?
That I, I, that was a little before my time. I, I, I was a former tech ed teacher. So I, I was only on the fringe of that process, of that process of bringing in the new curriculum. But Pearson was the one that I, I knew of from, from the beginning. So I, I, I would have, I would assume they would, they would talk to other, other companies. But I, we've been very satisfied with Pearson so far.
Very good, I just, I was just out of curiosity factor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
One of the things when I look at the write-up of the math, I say, that's like looking at a foreign language to me. We cover a lot.
We, we do. And honestly, the, the math teachers have been doing a great, great job at the middle school. And just yesterday, day before, I walked through three sixth grade math classes. And every single class I went through, they were doing the same thing. They were all on, on topic with what they were doing. And I can tell you, it's not what I did in sixth grade. You know, there were trapezoids and right angles. So it was, it was, it was very good to see the kids engaged in that. Yep.
And when we talk about the social studies, I'm wondering if you, or maybe Sean knows, are they looking into putting civics into the curriculum, back to the curriculum? What year? In the middle school or high school?
For initial reports, I heard it was middle school, most likely the eighth grade.
Okay, that's really good. And my other question is about the technology education.
Yeah.
Do we have, do we have the right coverage in technology education?
Do we have the right coverage?
Do we have teachers?
We, we want, one of, we have two teachers. One is a long-term sub, filling my, my open position. That, that position was a struggle to fill. The other teacher in the program is a certified teacher and he is, he's, he's been doing a good job. He's brought in, he, he's brought in a 3D printer to the program and is doing some nice demos with the kids with that as well.
Do other schools around us have this program or is that why it's? I know, I know it was very difficult for you to find somebody to cover. But is, is it around here somewhere or are we unique in that program?
We, we're not unique. I, I know that I visited Reading. They, they utilized the program. I, I, a different canned program for their tech, technology curriculum. I know, I, I, we visited there a few years ago and they, they still had the program. There, but there are, there are districts. Melrose, I believe, still has their, their, their tech ed program going as well.
So we've had a long-term sub there all year and now we're going to have one next year?
I, I.
Probably work into, I'll just leave that out there for us to think about. Because then maybe we need to think about some other way, like you said, it ties into the science. I didn't realize that. We might be able to get a science teacher to do that.
There, there are probably ways we could look at being creative with a STEM, a STEM-esque to the position.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, Jen.
Question, actually, my question is very similar, but how are the teachers licensed for the tech ed? It's the same kind of question, but are they?
Yes.
Is the science licensed? What's the license?
It is, it is a license for technology slash engineering. Mine is five, five through eight.
And are, are the teachers there including a long-term sub? Is that his?
The long-term sub is, is not certified at this time. The other teacher that he works with is certified in technology education.
Okay, and what, can I keep them? Sorry. What program are they, is that, is, what program are they using?
It, we don't, we're not utilizing a canned program anymore. We, we're developing our own curriculum to meet, meet the standards, which we, the middle school put into computer labs that have AutoCAD loaded on them, which is, is one of the strands of the tech, technology education standards. So that's going to be integrated and it's a lot of project-based learning, a lot of, a lot of technology education goes around the design process, which is the steps you take to solve a problem. You know, design, evaluate, reevaluate. And that's a lot of, a lot of what is, what is done.
And those, those positions are morphing into more engineering, project-based learning. Five, 10 years ago, they, you'd be doing PowerPoint presentations and now the students are coming in with advanced technology skills that it's, so you, typically you have those type of positions, but they, the curriculum morphs to adapt to what the students are going to be utilizing.
So are less teachers getting licensed in tech slash engineering?
Yes.
More, is that what's happening?
Yeah.
Yes.
Because what you're having is you're having the technology slash engineering certified teachers coming in. When, when you hire them and then you, you know, with the vision of including more science and technology within the curriculum. So you have your science teachers and then you have that engineering aspect of the science program, that those certified teachers have that engineering background.
So technically, we could hire someone in sci, who has a science license with an engineering?
Could tie into the engineering, to the physics.
Instead of necessarily focusing on the tech engineering piece?
Yeah. It all depends on what the, what the focus and the vision is for those, those positions down the road. So I think a lot like Reading and some of the other schools, you know, you have that, you know, those positions, but they morph to where the students are doing a lot more engineering work and project-based learning.
And when you do morph a program like that into more engineering, it does, it gives a great, a, a, a great opportunity for the students to build their math skills as well as their science skills. Because you're there, you can't do one without the other in engineering. So it's a, it, I remember when I was in the class, it was always great to hear a kid saying, wow, I did this, I did this in, in math class today. And you just, it's a good opportunity to give a little bit more of a real-world experience on why a kid might need to understand what pie is besides a dessert.
Would it be something that we'd be able to see the curriculum? We'd be able to get a summary or not in a week, but then?
Yeah, we, I, we, we, yes, we'll be able to put that, put that together. It has been, it has been an ongoing process because the, the curriculum's being developed this, this year. Last year, we, we were phasing out our SCANDTECH modules, which if any of you had children that came through prior, it was all a modular lab where there were all individual stations. And that has, was no longer being supported by the company that had created it. The software was all out of date. So we, we decided to develop our own curriculum to try to, try to meet the needs of our students.
I guess I don't understand though how that's done because when you've got a substitute teacher, and I know this isn't you, this is, this is all of us. When you've got a substitute teacher, I would want my child to be in the other class personally.
Right.
And who's, who's putting that program together? And so is, is it, is this all being put on the one teacher who is certified?
I think they collaborate in that shit.
There is collaboration going on. I was able to provide some materials that I would have been using if I was in, in that role myself.
I guess years ago, when this first came, when I was a very big proponent of it and I'm really, and I remember at one point when I came, there was no, they didn't, we, we did not have a, we didn't have money in the budget for you to keep up that program. And we weren't told about that and that was very distressing to me. And so now I don't know where this whole thing has led. And, but it is unique and it's one of the things that we could tell parents, this is what we have in our eighth grade, seventh and eighth grade. And I just think it's a real, it would be a real good thing for us to be able to put out publicly, and it's publicity, that, you know, we have this special thing. Not everybody has it, but we do and we want to keep it up and we want to support it. So I just want to see a way we can work at.
Strengthening the program.
Yes.
Agreed.
Yeah, you know, one of, one of the things, if I could just throw a little bit of publicity for the program, is the annual tech fair that the, that the science and tech ed teachers have been pulling together for probably 15 years now. It was two weeks, right before vacation, there was a nice big article in the Little Sun from it. So that was, was nice for a little publicity.
Thank you.
Anything further? Jen?
Can you just tell me real quickly, and I think I understand, but the computer literacy and the, and the tech ed, is there overlap there or is it completely different?
Well, it is not, it, now, nothing is really completely different anymore, but the, the process of computer literacy should be more the skills to utilize a computer in different software programs and it, some of those skills you need. Tech ed, when you're, if you're, it's a, if you choose a program, program that is web based. Tech ed, um, when you're, if you're, it's a, if you choose a pro- a program, program that is web-based per se, and you're gonna use that program to demonstrate the design process where you, you've given a problem to solve using that software package. There would be overlap, but the, the goal of computer literacy and the goal of the tech ed program would be two di- two different things. Because one should be focusing on the skill on how to build it. One should be focusing on the process it takes. You, you take one solving that problem, especially, especially at the tail end when you're looking at the design and redesign process, cause that's a, that's a key, key component that.
So I wonder if through the tech ed.
Yep.
They're gaining the computer literacy, right? So that, I mean, I'm just thinking of all the different things they can and can't take. And then I'm wondering if, if there is a way to sort of, they're getting some of the computer literacy skills in the tech ed, but doing it in a project-based way that's very different objective than the computer literacy. Is that an area that we should look at moving forward?
Uh, it's an area.
To open up some space for them, for the students?
It's, it's an area we, we could explore. Um, one of the, one of the problems I ran into, I know in the past when I would be doing, um, you say a PowerPoint project with the students was the, it was nice when I didn't have to spend the time to teach, to teach them how to use the PowerPoint. Then I could just say, we're doing a research project. This is what I want you to research and not have to go over the, how to make a, or jump across the screen and, and things like, things like that.
So what you're saying is it's basically like a, a computer intro class compared to a higher level class?
De- I, I, it's, it's really different levels when you look at the two. Um, so one, one is maybe that computer intro class.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying is that that first one is an intro to computers. The next one's like, okay, if you wanna go further into this and learn more about.
In a, in a way, one, one is, one is learning about the computer. One is actually using the computer to do other things. If you, if you wanna look at it.
Look at the AutoCAD and things like that.
Yeah, it, I, when I, in my view, when I was in, in the tech ed role, I viewed the computer as a tool. It was just another tool I used to solve a problem. Um, so that, that's, that was the way I, I kind of drew, drew the differences between the two. But it, it's definitely, um, there is, you know, some overlap. And there's also just the general confusion of, I know for years people thought I taught computers, where I really just used them.
Well, and I think that distinction needs to, we need to make it clear to our students that there is a very, cause I think there probably is some confusion among the students and there probably shouldn't be. They should know what those objectives are.
Right.
And I also wonder if we just as a group should think about that computer literacy and the skills students have going into middle school. It varies for sure, but many third graders and second graders are already making PowerPoint. They're doing all that already. And now they're gonna get in there and do it. So I just think we need to evolve too.
Right.
And maybe that, maybe that's not changing anything drastically, but it could mean something bigger than just kind of doing it the way we've always done it.
Changing, changing the rigor.
Right?
Agreed.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Um, this is probably more for, for Sean and Paul, but on page five, it says it is important to note that if a student is not in our accelerated program, this does not mean they cannot take honors level courses at Wilmington High School. So I guess I'm just wondering, can we, do we have or can we collect some data on how many, maybe we have it, we probably do, but how many students who take enhanced math in middle then wind up taking it? And then students who choose not to take it, do they wind up taking honors classes at the high school? Like, do we know if the enhanced math makes a difference when they, when they get to high school? Or is there no correlation? I, we, can we, do we have that or could we get it?
I, I think you could. I mean, I, I think when you're looking at, um, you know, in my experience, so we would have, uh, eighth graders take the advanced math and some would opt, uh, to take, come in at an honors algebra two level. Cause I think you guys, we, geometry, uh, at the freshman level, but, so you would take the advanced course. And then it really depends on, if you're just looking at math, it depends, in my experience, on the individual students. Because some students are taking honors English, honors history, honors, you know, honors across the board. And although they do advance like an honors algebra two, advanced math, some of them choose not to go into the advanced honors, you know, skip a level because they're focusing on some of these other honors courses. The other side of that is if you have a student that is really math-driven and science-driven, that algebra two track, um, is really, you know, appealing to them. So I think you could gra- gather the data from the advanced math in eighth grade, but you may not, if you have drop-off, there may be other reasons for that. Um, so in my experience as a high school principal, it's really individually, um, looking at ninth grade students. And a lot of times, you know, um, and we used to work with our students because we would see a lot of those juniors and seniors, advanced, um, academic students, that anxiety. And, and when you're looking at that transition from eighth grade to ninth grade, we want our advanced students to challenge themselves, but there also has to be a balance too. Because, um, you would see them involved in after-school activities, the band, sports, carrying all these honors courses as freshmen and plus taking advanced, you know, jumping a grade level. It's something that I think, uh, individually, when you work with students and families, you, you take a look at that. So, I mean, you could see that data, but I'm not sure if it's gonna correlate to kind of what, what we're looking at. You know what I mean? Um, and I know Bill Manchester, the C T L, um, has been working with the eighth grade and ninth grade to have that algebra one or that advanced math course in eighth grade be very similar to the ninth grade honors course. Cause that's really important. So you're, you know, you're saying if they complete this eighth grade advanced math course, then it should be the same as this ninth grade advanced math course. So I think we can definitely, you know, grab that data and see, you know, from the eighth grade to the ninth grade of the Wilmington students, um, how many chose to continue that advanced math, mouthpiece. Uh, does that make sense?
Yeah, no, I just would make, I think it'd be interesting as a parent when we have to make, help our children make these decisions to know why, for kids to think that through. And I think it's good to have them think about, well, I'm gonna do this, it's advanced and this, it's honors.
Sure, right.
And so if they decide not to do something, are there repercussions for that later on?
Right.
Are they not gonna get that A P?
Exactly, right.
That's important, but if we don't have data to talk about, then as, as they're caregivers, it's hard for us to guide them, I think, in the right direction. We don't wanna get them to 10th or 11th and say, oh, well, they should've, now they can't do this, you know? So I think, so I'd like that it's there, cause I think it makes people feel as though, oh, good, I don't. But I also think we need to be clear that if it really does make a significant difference in having them ready for honors classes at the high school, then we wanna make sure if they're eligible that they take advantage of that. Does that make sense?
Yes.
You gave me a segue into the, um.
See, I should've just answered, sure.
Just quickly, just quickly. Um, I think we've become, I also feel that we've become lazy in a sense about the C T Ls. I believe part of their pay is for them to be going down to the middle school and to be working with the middle school teachers. And I think that's a big glaring hole. I don't think they can get down there. And I wonder, because I was one of those at my school, um, for a couple of years. And they never made this, we could never get there because they didn't give us the time to get there. I would have my free periods in the middle of the school day. And so I'd have to run down, come back. And I think that there are ways to do it in other places. They, they must have it so that they can go down there on a regular basis. Even once a month is more regular. I don't believe all the C L, C T Ls or, I'm not sure how many, but I don't believe they get down there at all in the middle schools to help those teachers. And, um, I think that was, that would be one of the things that could help the middle school to get more, it's feel like they're in that, it's supposed to be from six to 12 curriculum-wise. And I think they need to feel that they're part of that.
Yeah, I have been talking to Mr. Gallagher and Ms. Peters about, um, you know, trying to, um, as- as- establish a better routine and, and create a space to allow them to feel more part of the middle school so that, so that those steps can be, can be taken.
Thank you.
Yes, Jen?
Last one, very simple. Um, so with the shifts in the new frameworks for history and social studies, we know that that's going to happen. What's the plan to have teachers, if it's happening in June, but they're gonna be expected to roll them out? What's the plan?
Oh, they won't be expected to roll them out in September. Um, is it, there's either a one or two-year grace period, one, one year?
Two-year grace period.
Uh, so there will be, when we, we will not roll them out in September. We'll, we'll, we'll evaluate them. And, um, it will give us some time to, to choose the proper curriculum, uh, when we know for sure what, what they're going to be.
And will that start in the summer, like looking, looking at it?
Yes, well, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's, actually, we're looking at two programs, Discovery Ed and Pearson, uh, for social studies, so.
We also have to give the, the book companies, um, the curriculum companies time to catch, catch up as well.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Anything further? Thank you very much, Kevin. All right, uh, Paul, move. Oh, I'm sorry, of course, yeah. Um, we'll be seeking approval to accept Kevin's report. Tom, do you have a second?
Quick thing, there's just one, a little typo on page three. We just wanna make sure that that gets taken care of. The bottom of this, of that first pair is outlined in the, it's blank for me. Is it blank for you? And there it is, it's outlined.
Ah, yes.
In the, it's blank there, so I just wanna make sure that that gets filled in. Okay, sorry.
If you look at some too much, you don't see.
Yes.
Oh, I know, I do it all the time. Exactly.
All right, we have before us, uh, first readings of a couple of, uh, policy changes. We didn't vote.
I asked for a motion.
Cause I, yeah.
All right, I know I had a motion. Did I have a second?
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor? And then you're finished. Thank you, Jen. All right, and, uh, we have before us, uh, first readings, a couple of policy changes. Frank, would you like to take us through this?
So this first policy is referred to in your school committee policy book as policy E F C. We're proposing some minor housekeeping changes for you. This policy, um, the amended version has been reviewed by your policy subcommittee. And the policy subcommittee concurs that we should make these, uh, minor changes. First, we're deleting the word "free" in the, uh, second paragraph where it says "a free lunch or other food simply because proper application has not been received." So we think that we should delete that word, uh, because in reality, a cafeteria worker cannot deny a, a lunch to someone who already has submitted the application in it and is eligible for a free lunch. So we're suggesting that you should delete that. And the second change is that, uh, there is a sentence in here at the end of the policy that says that you should have a statement, um, which, uh, just kind of pertains to eligibility for free milk and free meals or reduced-price meals. So we have recommended that you strike that sentence. And in its place, you put the sentence that says that students will be eligible to receive meals at no charge or meals at a reduced price if their household income is at or below the standards and guidelines established by the federal government for this purpose. Those are the two minor changes that we're suggesting. And again, um, the, I should have mentioned this, that the director of Nutrition and Food Service Program here at the school district has reviewed this and is recommending it as well.
Just one question, if we're removing the word "free", the title of the policy is "free and reduced-priced food services," so should we remove the word "free" from that too?
No, because this, the, the, uh, second part of the policy, that last paragraph does deal with free meals.
Okay.
So we want to still include that in this policy.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jen?
Um, just a quick question pertaining to the last paragraph as well.
Yes.
Um, is it just the federal guidelines and standards that we, um, we need to meet? Or, or is it as well as the state guidelines?
It's federal and, uh, state guidelines.
Should "and state" be a part of that last sentence maybe?
That's a good point, yes. Established by federal and state.
State and federal, yeah.
Government for this purpose, right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll make that, uh, in the second reading.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And the second, uh, policy, if I may, uh, is policy, um, that we have identified as E F D in your, in your policy booklet, if you approve this. This is a brand-new policy. And the purpose of this policy is to ensure compliance with the USDA Child Nutrition Program as well as to provide oversight and accountability for the collection of outstanding student meals. Sometimes in school districts, and believe me, I've worked in a lot of school districts. Wilmington is not one of those school districts that has a lot of money out there that is owed to the school district. This year, there's about a thousand dollars that is owed right now. And last year, it was between 1,200 and 1,500 dollars. And that money gets carried over into the next year. And within a month or two at the most, that money has been paid back, so it's really not an issue. But the federal government deals with all sizes of school districts and there are some issues in larger school districts. So we wanna be in compliance with this regulation, even though we're doing an excellent job, I think, of collecting that money that, uh, is due to the school district. I also wanted to point out a couple of, uh, a couple of things in this policy. When the account balances, uh, enter the negative, then students will not be allowed to purchase à la carte items. And, and that would, uh, not be limited just to a second entree. It would include snacks, ice cream, or additional beverages. However, if the student's account is in the negative, then that student would be offered a, an alternative lunch. And that alternative lunch would consist of a sandwich, milk, fruit, and vegetable. So no child really, uh, goes hungry in the Wilmington public schools. And we wanted to make sure that that is included in this statement. Notices of, uh, low or deficit balances will be sent to the parents so that they are aware of it. And they will either be sent by email or postal service. The parents may pay for the meals in advance, as all parents, uh, know about here in this room anyways. But we wanna make sure that everyone knows about that. So we'll get that out in our student handbooks. And we give them the guidelines for making sure that if they're eligible for a free or reduced lunch, then they can apply for it and we will, we will make sure that they get that, uh, free or reduced lunch. So when we send the notices by email or by, uh, postal, if they're, if they're not, uh, paid, then the food service director will probably give them a call and say, you have a, a negative balance. You really should pay this up so that everything can be clean. And if, uh, if they don't pay that up and if it goes into the next year and it's really not being paid, then she would forward that to your business office. And the Assistant Superintendent for Administration and Finance would set up a procedure to get in touch with them to make sure that that debt, uh, is paid. Also, I wanted to bring to your attention about, uh, delinquent accounts and, and collections. Failure to maintain up-to-date accounts may result in a delay of a student's fee-based curricula activity. So for example, if someone owed 50 dollars and they were planning on going to, um, a trip to New York City or to Europe and they were paying for that trip, then they would need to really clean up their account with the food service department before they could go on that particular trip. It's not related to your ordinary student activities within the school district. It's something that's above and beyond and would cost them some additional money. They would need to really clean up their food service, uh, bill before they could be eligible for that trip. And you should also know that at the end of the year, when seniors are signing out, there is a procedure for them to go through to make sure that everything is according to Hoyle and everything is paid up at the end of the year before they go through graduation ceremonies. So, the last thing I want to mention about this policy is that it's a requirement of the, uh, federal government that it be distributed to all the parents, uh, in the school district. And by approving this policy, we would make this as part of your handbook so that each parent would receive that at the beginning of the year. You all know that each parent signs off on the policies at the beginning of the year. And if any new parents and students moved into the district, then they would get a copy of this policy, they'd be directed to, to the, uh, the handbook, and, and, uh, they would sign off on the handbook as well.
MJ?
Just a quick question, has protocols been, uh, being created with regards to, let's say, the, those field trips that you had mentioned, um, as an example, with regards to the staff and then, um, the Food Service Department in rectifying to ensure that outstanding, uh, monies aren't owed? How is that communication transpiring? Because a lot of this takes place within the school and amongst the parents and staff, and it's, that's not, uh, that would be a new, I guess, workflow, for lack of a better term, in looking in this additional area to ensure all accounts are, um, in the block?
And that would be up to the Food Service Director to get in touch with, say, Kevin at the middle school to say, "Look, um, Sally has not paid up her food service bill."
But wouldn't she, she may not be aware necessarily of field trips that are being created or, um, formed? Um, so would, would that be maybe a part of the, uh, shop advisor of those proj, of those field trips? The, or staff of those field trips, do you have to go through the administration of the buildings or directly to, maybe, uh, Mary Palin?
I, I think that the link really should be from the Food Service Director to the principals, to, to give them a list of all of the people, all of the students who have a deficit balance, so that they would have that as a record, the principal would have that as a record, and they could check that list to make sure that everyone who is going on this extra field trip has paid the, the fee.
Would you be suggesting, like, a monthly update?
Mary sends these out weekly, so she, she could send it out weekly or probably monthly.
I'm just, just creating that new...
Yeah, I mean, the way it currently works, we do do this as well. And Mary does talk to the principals quite often and say, you know, "Can you see if you can get, you know, Sally Jones owes ten dollars, can you, you know, because they might have more interaction with the family?" After she's sent out invoices and so forth. So, she worked with the principals and then, you know, and then she would make a call as well and so forth. But, you know, we can make sure that...
I just want to make sure that this is clear so that people know whose needs to be done to whom. Thank you.
Tom?
A few questions, um, so how is this paid? Is this like, put on like a credit card, is it like, kind of like a Speed Pass type of thing where it replenishes itself? You know, you, you put twenty dollars, a hundred dollars, whatever, and once it gets to that limit, then it says, "Okay, let's, you know, grab another fifty dollars, put it into the account." Is it something like that that we do?
It, it is like that, um, so at the beginning of the year, well, back up, even before the beginning of the year, at the end of the year, some students may have money in their account, and that would be carried over to the next year. But then, at the beginning of the year, if they didn't have enough money in the account to start, then they would go on the website, look it up, put some money in the account, and once it gets down to a certain level, if they're not watching it very carefully, then they would get a notice, and it would be up to them to replenish that account.
It's a point-of-sale system, and they can go in and, and just, like, anything, put their money in the, or they can pay with a check if they wanted to as well?
So, what, what happens when they're a senior? And, you know, say there's a twenty-dollar credit, how is that money replenished back to the parents?
So, Mary would get in touch with people who have a, a, a positive balance there. And there are a couple of options. Say, for example, it wasn't twenty dollars, but it was two dollars, or, or three dollars and twenty-five cents. The parent may say, "You know what? I don't want that, you must have someone in the system that is needy. Why don't you just transfer that money to someone?" And Mary will do that. So, there are some students, at the end of the year, that'll have a negative balance, and some of the money from these students that have a positive balance will be transferred over to those students. If they have a positive balance and they want it, they get it, Mary sends it, uh, right to them.
What is it, My Nut Your Kids, is that the, it's changed names a couple of times, My School Box, My Nut Your Kids. But for those of you that aren't doing it or not managing it for their child, you load the account at the beginning of the year, they make it pretty easy. You can send in a check, you can use your credit card. I've got it set up so that I get an email notification if we go below ten dollars, and then that's my reminder, "Oh, I gotta, I gotta load her account." Uh, and in my experience, at the end of every year, you get a little note from Mrs. Palin that says, "Here's your balance, we'll carry it over for you until the next year," or, you know, "Remember, in September, you're gonna need to load your account." And it's worked very well for our family. You also can get, if you, if you really want to see what your kid is eating during the day, you can log on to our account and, for the child that gets double lunches or maybe extra snacks, an extra ice cream, it's all right there for you. So, it's a, it's a very useful, uh, user-friendly tool.
And Mary, Mary Palin does a fabulous job notifying parents. I was smirking because the principals, you receive the letter of, you know, the information of students that, with their accounts, and, um, as a former principal, my daughters were in the school, their names were on that account that we owed money, and I'd have to run down to the cafeteria before they got their lunch. So, it's a, it is a good, a good system.
But to the point of, of field trips, those extra trips, if there is a family that owes some money for their school account, yet they're signed up to go to Europe, well, it would be nice if they paid their ten dollars for their school lunches before they pay their five hundred deposit for Europe.
Jen?
I just have one thing I didn't catch earlier, um, but we start with parent guardian, and then in some paragraphs, we shift to just parents. Can we add guardian, just, just keep it consistent throughout, does that make sense?
We'll go over that and do that.
Okay, just a few thoughts, and I just, I didn't realize it the first time I read it, and I was like, "Oh, that probably makes sense to make sure we're consistent."
Great, thank you.
All right, this was our first reading, and, uh, would accept motions to, uh, approve the first reading of Policy E F C, Free and Reduced-Price Food Services, and first, uh, we should do this separately, I suppose, let's do, uh, can I get a motion to approve the first reading of Policy E F C, Free and Reduced-Price Lunch? Julie, second by Jen, all those in favor? That's unanimous? That's, uh, okay, unanimous?
Sorry.
Sorry? Seeking also a motion to approve the first reading of Policy E F D, Real Change Policy, Real Charge Policy, I apologize. A motion for Peggy, second by MJ, all those in favor? That is also unanimous. And, as, as our general longstanding practice, that is our first reading, we'll actually go to, uh, approve or not approve those policies at our next meeting.
You'll make the changes, recommend it, yeah?
All right, we've moved on to, uh, public comment.
Mr. Ragstow?
Hello, David Ragstow, eighteen Marion Street. Have a couple of comments about the middle school, uh, program of studies. One point that I want to bring up is that for the, uh, science curriculum, uh, Massachusetts did not actually adopt the Next Generation Science Standards. We developed our own that were largely influenced by them, but, um, but are different. And so, if we use an off-the-shelf, uh, science program that's based on NGSS, I think it's important that we look at that and see where the differences are and where, uh, that needs to be potentially augmented to make sure they're covering all of the Massachusetts standards. For no other reason than that's, by next year, those are going to be assessed. So, last year was the old standards, this year, it's, uh, the overlapping standards, and next year, it's going to be the two thousand sixteen standards. But they're not exactly the same as the Next Generation Science Standards, and so that should be...
Yeah, that, just a point of clarification, maybe I misspoke, so, very similar to what you're bringing up. So, the, the Pearson, uh, product is geared to the Massachusetts standards, which was based on, yeah, the Next Generation, so, we're teaching the right standards.
Uh, and then for the history and social science, uh, standards that are going to be coming, and that is definitely going to require a shift, uh, in the middle school curriculum because the, uh, it's going to move to a two-year sequence of world geography and history in sixth and seventh grade, and then eighth grade is going to be a full-year civics course. Uh, so there is, one of the big emphasis, uh, emphases in the new standards is, uh, an emphasis on civics throughout the, uh, history and social science curriculum, starting from the elementary grades. But eighth grade is going to be a full-year civics course on, you know, roots of American democracy, found, you know, philosophy of the Constitution, the, the whole thing. And so, that's going to be, uh, coming in, will require, um, a good amount, a good amount of change. Uh, and the last thing I wanted to mention was about the, uh, what we've just been talking about for the kids with the negative balances and so forth. One thing that I would really hope that we always do in these situations is, uh, is treat them with humanity and sensitivity, because there are some districts that I think very unfortunately resort to shaming, uh, and not just the parents, but of the children. And I think that that would be unconscionable to, uh, to make the, you know, to shame kids for, you know, negative balances and for problems of collecting, um, of these balances for lunch accounts. And so, um, I just think that that's an important thing to make sure that those are always handled with a lot of sensitivity.
Maybe, and we do that.
Thank you. All right, uh, subcommittee reports, yes, MJ?
I've got a couple here, so I'll try to get through them. Where do I start? Um, first off is, uh, the Wilmington Education Foundation, um, they were planning on having a lip, uh, lip syncing fundraiser this Friday evening, um, of which has been canceled, um, due to lack of interest. So, that, I just wanted to make everyone aware of that, so as you are planning on attending, that is no longer, uh, that event has been canceled. I, today, um, I attended Day on the Hill, which is hosted by MASC. Uh, it was a wonderful event, um, um, that was held actually at the Graham Mason's Lodge on Tremont Street. Basically, it just went over the stat, uh, the state of, uh, a lot of the, um, topics and issues that, um, we typically discuss in General Assembly. We had, uh, House Representative, um, Erin Vega out of Holyoke, who, um, brought us up to date with regards to where the House stood with the supplemental budget, as well as, uh, the other budget, um, for instance, the circuit breaker. The House is recommending a seventy-two percent funding increase. We've heard that the Senate is not proposing such a high reimbursement rate, but if they're, they were caucusing today, so that's still under discussion. Um, and, um, Senator Sal DiDomenico from Everett, I believe, also, uh, spoke on a variety of different, uh, topics, um, in funding, um, and how funding has changed, um, since two thousand and one, uh, which was right before the economic decline. And we still have not, the state still has not funded public schools to that, to levels of which we had seen back in two thousand and one. So, um, they were talking about how, um, there's still so much that needs to be done, um, and to discuss a variety of ways and revenue, um, to try to, um, see that come to fruition, down the road fiscal, you know, whether it be, uh, next year's budget or two thousand and twenty. Uh, some of the things that will impact funding are some ballot questions that'll come up in November with regards to lowering, um, the state's sales tax, uh, back to five percent. If that does happen, then, um, it will be detrimental, um, to funding of Chapter Seventy, amongst other, uh, public school funding, um, initiatives that we, we do get through the state. So, um, so, uh, that was, uh, it was very, it was very interesting. It's, um, more of a cheerleading discussion about what to talk to your representatives about, how to address it with them so that they commit to following through on those items that we, they're all, we're all in agreement, but pushing them one step forward and, "Well, how are you gonna make this happen for us?" You know, um, so that was very helpful. Lunch was, um, made by a couple, several technical schools, Nishoba, and a couple of the other vocational schools in the area, which was, they did a wonderful job. And other than that, I, um, I just chatted with a lot of colleagues I was able to talk to, Peabody's representatives, I was just, um, socializing with colleagues, and their reps were there for the luncheon, which was lovely, and, um, I stopped into Representative Misselli's office just to check in, and, um, one of his aides, Casey, was there. I think things are, um, still going on, um, with preparing for his, uh, representative, Misselli's services for tomorrow and Friday. But, uh, the work of Wilmington is, is still going on and, um, learning that his, uh, Chief of Staff, Dave Robertson, will continue the work, um, along with Casey supporting him, to address any needs Wilmington residents will, will have. So, at this time, Wilmington won't have a, a vote on the floor, but, um, but they, we can still be, um, part of the conversation through our, through that office. And, um, I, I guess, it goes to say that, uh, my, you know, the loss that our community and our schools in having such a sage representative and a strong advocate for our community, um, is really impactful. But, um, anyway, so I, I sent my aloes to Senator Tar's office, he was in caucus, but it was, it was a lovely afternoon, and it was a very productive afternoon with regards to where we, um, where public schools sit with the state house and funding. And lastly, um, Paul Cardello, who is President of the iPods for Wounded Veterans, reached out to me earlier, um, this week. He wanted me to, um, announce and to congratulate Wilmington High School teacher and, um, local Heroes Club, the high school's local Hero, Heroes Club Advisor, uh, Don Martell, for being named a finalist in Teacher of the Year Award, which is given through iPods for Wounded Veterans, along with the Veteran Hospital administrators that the organization works, uh, through. Uh, Don has been the advisor for this group for the past six years, and she and the group of students have been involved in several projects that have brought much joy and comfort to our veterans recovering in various military hospitals. Besides the well-known Dear Soldier Letter Campaign and caring cards for our military, her organization has created gratitude banners, which our high school students, um, have written notes of encouragement on, um, which have been hand-delivered to these hospitals so that all patients can, uh, partake and enjoy them. In addition, her group is very active in fundraising and collecting donations for Patriot Bags, which are bags that, uh, they create with books and toiletries and comforts from home that are distributed to, um, all of our servicemen and women, um, as well as those at, uh, recovering in those hospitals. These are just a few of the projects that she and her group have undertaken, and through this group's, um, students not only learn by ways of, uh, how to support our servicemen and women, uh, but they also develop a broader perspective of the sacrifices that are made by these men and women each and every day. So, winners will be announced in May, um, and I just want to congratulate Don, for such a wonderful and very high honored achievement, uh, just to be named a finalist for that such a, uh, one, to be recognized for the work she does here at the high school on behalf of our veterans.
Well, MJ, you just made me realize that I was terribly remiss in, uh, not offering Representative Misselli a moment of silence before we started our meeting. It is certainly his, uh, his passing is a great loss to this community. And I offer my condolences, I'm sure everyone here offers their condolences to his family and his loved ones. So, thank you for your report, MJ.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Julie?
Um, while we were talking about policies earlier, it occurred to me that perhaps our policy subcommittee consider convening, I don't know, next couple of weeks, next month or so. We're hearing a lot about vaping and juling in the news, and I don't even know all the terms, but I think it might be timely for our policy subcommittee just to take a look at the policies that we have on the books. I think they'd probably fall under our smoking and tobacco policies. I think we went through a review process not too long ago, but I think it would be appropriate and timely for us just to take a look again and make sure that we are in line with the latest and greatest.
My timeline has been slipping lately, but if I'm not mistaken, I think we did that at the beginning of this year. Didn't we?
Yeah, we've, we've gone through a number of the policies, um, yeah.
But didn't we do vaping at the beginning?
I was gonna bring that up, too, no. We've never done that as a... I was going to bring that up, too. No. We've never done that as a, no, not as a...
Yeah, we definitely added it into the...
The policy.
We revised the smoking and tobacco policy.
Right, and put vaping in as a, okay. I couldn't find it, so...
Just juuling, I know that it's part of that vaping product piece. Is that, is that something different?
I'm not familiar with that term.
It's the same. It's all electronic cigarettes. So it's, I mean, yes, it's maybe not the same, but it's very similar. You know, they both use a liquid.
If it's different, I should probably...
Yeah, does it hurt? We're all looking a little confused right now. Does it hurt to just have a meeting and reconsider what we've got?
No, I was going to, I was going to talk to you tonight about reconvening the policy subcommittee. I think we need to do that.
Some of the stuff changes so quickly that it's hard to keep up with it.
And I think that there's a new policy that just came out from this, at the state level, that I think I shared with Paul, that may also offer an opportunity to address that piece as well.
Yeah, I think definitely, I think we need to do that. But I think in a couple of weeks from now, probably. There's too much going on right now.
We'll do that.
Okay. Mine's from the CPAC, and I'm very excited. I hope I can go to this. I'm planning to go to this. There is a Mind, Body, and Goals Behavioral Health Provider Fair at Wilmington High School on May fifteenth from five to seven thirty. And they couldn't speak highly enough of this woman who's going to be the speaker, Lynn Lyons. And so I'm very excited to see what this is. But there are also going to be tables and vendors there. So I'll bring this again and remind us the next time, but it sounds like something excellent to do. And I really, I've been remiss a little bit this year, in and out of that, being able to go to the meetings. But they come up with some wonderful, wonderful guest speakers, the CPAC, and I think people think they're only for the special ed students, but they're not. They, this relates Mind, Body, and Goals. It relates to all of us. So I just want to remind everybody and hope that people will come to this. So I'll remind you again at the next meeting. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. I will say that this Saturday, the town holds its annual election. Our next meeting will be on May ninth, at which time we will do our reorg. I just want to give all the members a heads up that, as everyone on this committee knows, I've been dealing with some pressing family matters that have been prolonged and are going to continue. It has taken up a tremendous amount of my time, and as the chairmanship has suffered in some ways as a result of that. So I will not be, I'll be looking to chair next year. So if committee members want to consider that for the next, for the reorg meeting. All right. Correspondents?
None at this time.
All right. Future meetings, our next meeting is May ninth, and then May twenty-third. And that will conclude our business and public session. I would accept a motion to adjourn public session and enter into executive session. Tom, could you read the motion?
Oh, I thought it was just adjourned.
I'll tell you what. I'll read it. You tell me if it's the motion you want to make.
Sure.
The Wilmington School Committee will enter into executive session pursuant to MGL-C30A, S-21A-2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Tom, is that your motion?
Yes, it is.
Do I have a second? MJ? Now, this requires a little call vote. Jen?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Myself, yes. MJ?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. That concludes our public session.